Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The March 21st Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting for the City of Longview is now called to order. We appreciate your attendance here this evening. In just a moment, I'm going to ask that you please stand for the invocation, remain standing for the pledge. Commissioner Heath Chamberlain will be leading us.
If you'll bow your heads with me. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us together here tonight to conduct the business of the city. We thank you for the City of Longview. We pray for blessings upon the city and its inhabitants, dear God. And we just ask tonight that you guide our decisions, that we make the best decisions possible to further interest in the city and all the residents thereof. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item is the approval of the minutes from the last meeting in February. Have all the commissioners had an opportunity to look over, have any questions on them? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval. Have a motion for approval?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? The next thing on your agenda is the citizen comment portion of the meeting. The citizen comment portion is where comments are made concerning something that's not part of the public meeting. In other words, if you're here to address a particular situation of the City of Longview and it's not on the agenda, then you may come to the microphone and state your name, as well as your address, and give your comments, any citizen comments from the audience. Seeing none, we will move to item six of the regular agenda. The purpose of the meeting is to hear all of the pertinent testimony concerning those that are in support or in opposition of any of the applications that are before the commission tonight. This is the first of two hearings that will take place. The hearing tonight and anything that is approved tonight will go to the City Council, and the City Council will consider it on April the 13th. The order that it will go tonight, first of all, you will have the staff that will tell us what the agenda item is concerning. Then the applicant may come and address us and tell us exactly why they're wanting this zoning change. Then we'll have those in favor and those in opposition, where I'll have the general meeting that will take place at that time. If you are part of a large group, which I do not see a large group here, but if you were part of a large group and you're speaking on the same thing, we ask that you please get a spokesman and that you please limit it to about a five-minute period. We're now on Agenda A of the regular agenda. Agenda Angela.
Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider application Z-23-07 filed by Tommy Vilbig requesting a rezon from agricultural to heavy commercial zoning district for approximately 5.159 acres of abstract two. AR Johnson survey tracks 112 and 113, section six, situated on the southeast corner of Eastman Road and the I-20 access road. The applicant is requesting to rezone this property located on southeastman road from agriculture to heavy commercial zoning district. At this time, the property, as you can see on this map, is actually located outside the city limits of Longview. They are requesting annexation and running the annexation and rezoning request at the same time. So both public hearings will be held at City Council in April for the annexation and rezone concurrently. When annexation does occur, the property is automatically assigned an agricultural zoning designation. Therefore, a rezone request is needed. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with our future land use map and surrounding uses. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any of the commissioners have a question for the staff? At this time, we will ask that the applicant please come to the mic and give us more information, please.
Sure. Good evening, commissioners. My name's Tommy Vilbig with Vilbig &amp; Associates, and I'm the civil engineer on this project, working with QuickTrip, and I'm at Sweet Four, or, sorry, Chisholm Trail in Plano, Suite 104. So the reason for this request is they're looking to build a QuickTrip gas station at this site. So as Angela showed, a portion of it is already zoned C2, so we're just looking to bring the rest of it as C2, so that way we can move forward with our project. I'm here to answer any questions that the commission has.
Any commissioners have any question of the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in support of the request? Anyone in the audience that would like to speak against the request? If so, please come forward to the podium, state your name and address. Seeing none, any additional questions or comments from the commissioners? If there's no additional questions or comments, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
We have a motion to approve as submitted. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, it passes by unanimous. Regular agenda item B. Angela.
Yes, sir. A public hearing will be held to consider application Z-23-08 filed by Robert Wallen requesting a rezone from Single Family Four to General Retail Zoning District for approximately 5.59 acres of abstract 186. Dolores Sanchez survey, tract 43-03, section seven, situated on the southeast corner of Gilmer Road and Spring Hill Road. The applicant is requesting a rezone from General Retail, or from Single Family Four to General Retail to develop the lots for retail uses. Gilmer Road is a text dot roadway and is a principal arterial roadway. This type of uses is allowed along these, along this type of roadway as long as access management is followed. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with surrounding uses, therefore it does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any of the commissioners have a question? If not, I will call for the applicant. Rob, come forward.
Thank you. My name is Rob Wallen. I live at 1310 Heather Lane in Longview. And we are trying to look at this property and turn it into a commercial property. Like, it's on the main thoroughfare and it's in Spring Hill. And our team has done a lot of work behind the scenes to clean this area up and worked with the church and with the school and with local youth organizations to clean up a lot of the fence and buildings that have been there. Still some work to do, but we're doing that behind the scenes. We feel like this is a good area to put some commercial property in on that corner, help the Spring Hill community, and it'll eliminate the eyesore that has been there for so long. I'll take any questions you might have at this time.
How do you envision the traffic flow? Is Panther or the Elvira lane going to stay open, the road going to stay open?
The road in the middle will likely not be there based on, this is a two-part request that you'll see me in just a minute on the second part, but that Panther Road will not likely be there, but that decision hasn't been finalized yet. I don't believe it's adequate for the city in terms of the structure of the road that we could use it.
Okay, so you envision the retail traffic then coming in off of Gilmer Road?
Well, if you can see on the picture, it's pretty small, but the driveway would be on the frontage, so the entrance would be at the south end, and then there's a drive that runs along Gilmer Road, and that's where the traffic to the commercial properties would enter. So there wouldn't be any further north towards that intersection. You wouldn't have any access there.
No more in-and-outs on Gilmer Road out there?
Right. Just the one where Castleberry comes in on the south side.
I guess my question has to do with the three active oil wells on there. Have the oil companies, do they know what your plans are?
We're working with them diligently, and we've got some things, some negotiations on the way, and we've got a contract on the property that's time-constrained. But yes, we've been talking with oil companies and we have an agreement in place, nothing written down, but...
Any of the other commissioners have a question of the applicant? Seeing none, thank you. Appreciate it. I'll now open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this request? If so, please come to the podium. Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in opposition of the request? If so, please come to the podium. If not, I will close the public hearing part of it, entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we are to regular agenda item C. Angela.
Yes, sir. A public hearing will be held to consider application Z-23-09 filed by Robert Wallen requesting a rezone from Single Family Four to Single Family Six zoning district for approximately 3.56 acres of abstract 186. Dolores Sanchez survey, tract 45, section seven, situated on the east side of Panther Street, south of Spring Hill Road. So the applicant is requesting a rezone from SF4 to SF6 zoning district so that he can develop a single-family subdivision. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with adjacent uses, therefore it does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any of the commissioners have a question of Angela?
I have a question about the zoning change from, what is it, from S6 to S4?
SF4 to SF6.
SF6, what is the difference? Is there...
SF4, you can also look on your packet, but SF4 requires a 7,500 square foot lot where SF6 is a 4,000 square foot lot. So it's a smaller lot. They do have smaller setbacks where SF6 has a 20-foot front setback and SF4 would have a 30-foot setback. And then as far as home size in a SF4 zoning district, you would have a 1,200 square foot home, where SF6 you would have a 1,000 square foot home.
Got you. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Wallen, do you need to give any more information?
No, sir.
Anyone have a question of the applicant? I'll now open the public hearing. Anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak against it? Seeing none? So commissioners, I will entertain a motion unless somebody has a question.
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries, beginning and with consent. Going to agenda item D. Angela.
Public hearing will be held to consider application Z-23-10 filed by Brady Chambers requesting a rezone from agricultural to townhome zoning district for approximately 6.23 acres of abstract 186. Dee Sanchez survey, tract 11, section 5, located at 4125 Greg Tex Road. The applicant is requesting a rezone from agricultural to townhome zoning district. He would like to develop a townhome subdivision on this property. Greg Tex is classified as a collector and is maintained by the City of Longview. Collector roads provide for the collection and distribution of traffic between arterial and local streets. Gilmer Road is classified as a principal arterial and is maintained by text dot. This type of development is appropriate along both of these roadways as long as access management is followed. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with the future lane use map, therefore it does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions of Angela? Is the applicant present? If so, please go to the microphone. State your name and address and speak into the mic, please.
My name is Brady Chambers, and my address is 1761 Ironwood Road in Gilmer. My partner and I would like to, obviously what Angela said, build a townhome subdivision here. We would have most likely two entrances off Greg Tex. It would not affect the traffic on Gilmer Road. There's already water sewer present. There's already one fire hydrant on the corner there, on the, I guess, the southwest corner of the property, but most likely we would be looking at putting two additional fire hydrants in place. We went to the pre-development meeting and all, so I think we've got all of our bases covered as far as utilities and everything, but I'm ready for questions.
Anyone have any questions of the applicant? Are they going to be multi-story, single-story?
We were thinking two-story. Yes, sir.
How many units are you envisioning?
Well, we've originally talked about 28. There won't be any more than the zoning will allow, obviously, or the entrances at all there would allow, but I believe you can build up to 30 on one entrance, but we're, it's a pretty good-sized corner there, and all the traffic would come in from Greg Tex and go, and enter into Greg Tex, which is a pretty good road right there. It's not just a blacktop or nothing. But anyway, right now, it's just, it's just zoned agriculture, so...
What about the impact of the neighbor across the street there?
Actually, the impact of the neighbor directly, there's a church on the south side, and that house is actually on the property. On the south side, there's a church that have a very large, a pretty good-sized piece of land there. On the east side, there's already a zoning request for a subdivision for single-family. I believe you guys probably already listened to that. I mean, I guess maybe that was last month, but anyway. So as far as traffic goes, I don't think that there would be an issue at all in affecting anyone in the vicinity there. There's nothing but woods back towards, it says A there, back towards the west. There's not really disturbing any neighbors. There's a neighbor to the north, but he's on about, I don't know, eight or nine or 10 acres there. He's on up further north of his property, so it's not really interfering with anyone that I know of.
Any other questions, commissioners? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone in the audience that would like to speak in opposition of the request? Any additional questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Have a motion to approve? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries by unanimous. Regular agenda item E. Angela.
Yes, sir. A public hearing will be held to consider application Z-23-13 filed by Aon Coil Products, Inc., requesting a rezone from Single Family Three and Two-Family Two Light Industrial Zoning District for approximately 8.678 acres of lot, 16 Block One, New City Block 617, Graves Edition, lots 17, 17A, 17B, 17C, 18, 19, 20, New City Block 617, Ellis Acreage, and lots 26B, 26C, 26L, New City Block 618, Ellis Acreage, located on the east side of MLK Boulevard, north of Young Street. The applicant is requesting a rezone from TF Two-Family, TF Three, and SF Three Two Light Industrial in order to do an expansion of Aon Coil. MLK is classified as a collector and is maintained by the City of Longview. This type of development is appropriate along this roadway as long as access management is followed. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with adjacent uses, therefore it does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions this time of Angela? Would the applicant please come forward and have a representative with Johnson &amp; Pace and... Go ahead.
Yes, I'm Joe Hart with Johnson &amp; Pace, 1201 Northwest Loop 281 in Longview. This is the rezon's request to allow them to do an expansion, 220,000 square foot expansion to their facility, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Joe, can you explain the one lot that they don't have?
Yes, sir. Okay, that is in the process of being acquired. It's, they started acquiring these in 2019 and 2020, and with the intention of buying everything along MLK. And then sometime in the process, there was a change in leadership at Aon, and the person who was handling this is no longer with Aon. So, but the current leadership understood that it was all acquired, and they were good to go and plan to move forward. So as we begun the process of preparing the rezoning, it's like we realized they did not own that track, which was a big surprise to everyone. So with that, we took a pause before, we were going to submit this a couple of months ago, and they've begun to contact, first the lady who's paying the taxes on it. She lives in New York and is very much amenable to selling, but there are, they found 12 heirs to the property. They've made contact with eight of the 12. The lady who's paying the taxes is representing seven of the 12 heirs right now, and they're still, they have not contacted the other four. They're working on it, you know, it's just, she says everyone in the family's willing to sell, they have no use for the land. It's just a process of tracking them down and getting the affidavit signed. Everything is in good faith, and it's, and they believe that before we get too far into construction, they'll have this acquired and we'll move on with the full project. But right now, the project is, the building is carved out in a way, the site is designed in a way to work around this track, so it's not, and it, we can have a fully compliant site without it in case it ends up taking a year or two or three. Who knows? But they're not, they're not able to wait for that, so...
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other question from the commissioners?
What is the, what, have you quantified, what's the separation between this and the school? And what are the impacts that it will have, you know, on that campus as far as noise? Or is that an effect at all?
You know, it's, there'll be, there'll be a fence along, I think it'll be a solid screen. Does it have to be solid screen fence, Angela?
Yes, it'll have to be solid screen wooden or masonry fence with at least a 10-foot buffer.
That's right, with a 10-foot buffer. So...
I believe the school sold some of the property.
Oh, did they?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
So they were...
Yeah, so the property directly to the south, they did sell some, Aon.
Isn't that the administration building, not necessarily the school that's south of them?
No, it was a school, and I think it still is. It may be a daycare.
Jail Everheart, isn't it?
More of a daycare.
Yeah, it's a daycare now, but it was a school before.
Yeah.
And then the address, you have a bus barn over there, and then you have the administration building over there on Young Street, so...
Yeah.
Any other questions, commissioners? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anyone in support of this that'd like to come to the mic?
Got all dressed up for this, so... My name's Doug Witchman. I'm actually the president of Aon Coil Products. I live at 4300 Willow Bend. Aon's been an integral part of the Longview community for many years. With this expansion project, we anticipate being a community partner for much longer. I've been here for a year, a year and a half or so, and the town's really kind of grown on me, so this is kind of a first big project for me. I'm excited for it. You know, all the little hang-ups, such as that little notch, that all kind of comes with territory, so much appreciated.
Any questions? Anyone in the audience that'd like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Have a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Does pass. Item F. Angela.
Yes. A public hearing will be held to consider application Z-23-14 filed by Vallart Properties requesting a rezone from Multi Family Two to Single Family Five zoning district for lots 13 through 15, Block Three, New City Block 507, Melrose Edition, located at the northeast corner of Seventh Street and Laurel Street. The applicant is requesting to rezone this property in order to build three single-family homes. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with our future lane use map and adjacent uses, therefore it does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions of Angela at this point? Would the applicant please come forward? State your name, your address. Speak into the mic, please.
Adam Thompson with Thompson Builders, 1702 Riviera Drive in Longview. Basically, what she said, I'm representing Vallart Properties to build three single-family homes there, 1,200 square foot, just three-bedroom, two-bath, single-family homes. That's pretty much it. It's, everything around it is single-family homes, so he's just trying to get it rezoned to be able to do that. Any questions?
Any commissioners have any questions of the applicant? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none, anyone in the audience that would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Motion approved.
Have a motion to approve?
Second.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
I really didn't make a motion for approval. I made a motion. Sorry about that.
Angela, staff update, please.
Yes, sir. All zoning items that were presented to City Council was approved. All zoning items that were presented to City Council was approved.
Anyone else have anything? If not, we will stand adjourned. Oh, I want to do this.